This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the town of Clarkdale. It's Tuesday, April fifteenth. And so I've called the meeting to order. And the time is four thirty PM. Yeah. So roll call, please, Gus.
Advisory member Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Faust. Commissioner Conk.
I'm here.
Commissioner Spence.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly. And Vice, or excuse me, and Chair de Blanc.
Here. All right, now we'll move to item three, public comment. The public is now invited to provide comments on items that are not on this agenda. Is there any one in the public who has comment? All right, so we will next, we'll close public comment and move to item four. Actually, we never opened it. Item four, approval of minutes. Next is consideration of the minutes of the meeting from December three, two thousand and twenty-four.
Wow.
Seems so long ago. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the December three, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Next is item six, new business, chairperson selection. So it's being left up to us to decide whether we want to do, do we? We have a quorum. We can do this, or we can wait until a future date, at which time we might not have more than four members anyway. But I'll leave it to you. Do you? Commission members? It's up to us to decide whether we want to do this now?
I'm, I'm a little inclined to have more people here, but we're not guaranteed to get that.
Right.
Do, should we have an email or something where we ask everybody to, where we can find out who actually wants to? To have this, not?
Um, well, all right, so this is discuss, consider, and act upon the selection of a new chairperson for the Planning Commission. So that's an item for discussion. Are you suggesting that you would like to? The, the, the selection won't happen by email. It will happen in a meeting, I believe.
Agreed.
Correct. We can't vote by email. That would be a violation of OML, so.
Right, so. Is there anyone else who, Carol?
Oh.
Is there anything that you would like to say about whether or not?
I was just gonna have a question. Was Marcia Faust the Chair of the Design Review Board?
Uh, we.
No.
No.
Okay.
I, I'm gonna say something that I think is important to consider about electing a chairperson. And I think it's important to elect a chairperson who's able to come to all the meetings, or at least most of. That, and that's really mostly what there is to consider is who's going to be here? And if you're not comfortable deciding now, we can wait for Ruth, right? Do you see a point in waiting, Ruth?
Um, again, that's entirely up to the commission. If it's, you know, if everyone decides that they'd rather wait until we have a, a more complete board, we can do that.
All right. I'm waiting to hear.
I would like to wait.
Okay. So two of us would like to wait, so we are going to postpone until our next meeting.
Sure, but we need.
What I'd like to put on the record is that, uh, right now, we have four members here of the commission. And if at the next meeting, we only have four, that we will proceed. We're not going to wait indefinitely for more people to be here. Agreed?
I can agree with that, yes.
Do they need a motion to postpone this item?
Correct, yes.
All right, so let's see. So we have a motion and a second, I believe. Well, let me do it more formally. So we have a motion to postpone until the next meeting of the Planning Commission to elect a chairperson. So we have a.
I second.
I second that.
All right, so we have two motions and two seconds. We have the motion, yes?
Yes.
I second the motion, and I, I'd like to include part B on that, the vice chair as well, if that's possible.
Well, yes, okay, great. So on part A, the motion carries, all those in favor say aye? Aye, we all agree?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so unanimously, the motion to wait until the next meeting to elect a chairperson carries with the caveat that at the next meeting of the Planning Commission, we will proceed with four or more members. All right, next, the vice chairperson selection. Do we hear? Someone make a motion about what to do?
I make a motion that we postpone selection of the vice chair of the Planning Commission until the next meeting.
Good, do we have a second?
A second.
Good, all those in, uh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so we have agreed, Gus, that we are going to postpone to both of those, A and B, until the next meeting. All right, so we're moving on to the public hearing. Zone change request from single-family and limited multiple-family residential, that's R2, to commercial, C2. And we're going to have a presentation from staff. And staff will give presentation, then it says, A, applicant will give presentation.
Um, can you just?
But you will go, you'll go first?
Present review.
And so I'm a little mixed up. Staff will give the presentation. Are you giving the presentation on behalf of the applicant?
No.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I will give a, a staff report, a recap of the staff report that you received, detailing land use and all those things that we want to make sure that we cover. And then the applicant will talk about the proposed use of the, of the purpose of the rezone.
All right, very good. Great. I'm gonna go on mute here.
Oh, that's okay. Well, let me just see if it works like this, so I can move it. But it might, it might not, so I'll just tell you to go to the next. That's all right, we'll just do it that way. All right, good afternoon, um, Commission. Before you have a application for a rezone from single-family and limited multiple-family residential, R2, to commercial. Um, next slide, please. So, um, application PC dash two five zero zero two four, addressed at four one four Peace Garden Path, is requesting to, um, change from R2 to commercial. Um, this is kind of just what the current zoning looks like, so you can get an idea of where it's located. Um, it's off of Broadway. Um, and that is the current zoning right there. So you can see the R2, and it is neighboring an, a piece of commercial and R1 Limited. So, yes. Off of Broadway and Peace Garden Path. Um, so if you see the RV Rain Spirit Resort, um, go down a couple slides, because I have a vicinity map. Yeah. Next. Oh, wait, no, I don't have it on here. Sorry. No, it's not that one. It's in, actually, it's in your agenda. You're in your, in your packets. But it's off of Broadway. Mm-hmm. So they're requesting to transition to a uh, commercial zoning designation. And it aligns with our general plan land use designation that we have, um, as a designation that we created in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, neighborhood commercial is the intended, um, land use designation that was, uh, created for this zone. Um, that is kind of addressing some nearby, um, commercial uses, like, um, local, local businesses that might be interested in developing on that Broadway stretch. It is also a hub for kind of tourism, things that we have here locally, Tawaki Inn. Um, it is nearby to the railroad. Um, RV Rain Spirit Resort is located nearby. And also nearby is, um, Tuzigoot and, um, and the river, the Verde River. So that's why it's kind of, um, one of those things that is aligned a lot with that overlay, or not overlay, but the land use designation of neighborhood commercial. So the purpose of a classification is to provide for convenient goods and services for the residents of Clarkdale and surrounding areas. So appropriate uses in this general planned land use designation would be things like banks, offices, retail intended to service the local market, salons, wineries, businesses that meet daily needs, and generate less traffic noise and congestion, um, that would be typically found in industrial or heavier commercial use area. So the proposed rezone aligns with the broader goals for this area and would fall within the intended scope for the neighborhood commercial land use designation. Next slide. So this is just an, an image of where, where the property is with the red pin and the neighborhood commercial, uh, general plan land use designation. So you can see that that whole, that whole area there has been, has been identified as a opportunity for neighborhood commercial for this area. So some history about this site, um, Penumbra, located on the former site of ACIS Massage School, um, previously held a conditional use permit for the school. So you can see that there were attempts to kind of create a little bit more of a commercial aspect of, on this property already. Um, the previous owners had this conditional use permits that they could, they could operate their massage school. Again, it's just showing history that, um, in, in the past, people have tried to, um, use this land in a little bit different ways that maybe perhaps weren't aligning with their business goals and the rest of the area around it. Um, let's see, so current and proposed uses. Um, under the current use of R2, um, the five point three eight, uh, seven acre site under the concurrent zoning could support up to twelve fourplexes, a total of forty-eight dwelling units, uh, based on the square footage and a forty percent law, um, coverage allowance. So it doesn't account for any buildable land, but just, um, based off of, um, area. It would already, um, serve a much higher density or much more intense use in that area. So you're talking twelve fourplexes in that area. Um, the proposed rezone, um, it is to, is to be, is being proposed because they want actually a less dense, a less, um, impactful use on this area. Um, so although it would require a, a change to the current zoning, it would likely result in less environmental, infrastructural, and community impact, um, and support a lower density development than the existing zone, zoning permits. Um, the proposed use is to project it to be more compatible with the site's, um, current and future context and align better with the evolving commercial and tourism-driven character of the area. Um, so as you can see with the history, it was already trying to address some of those community needs with schooling. Um, and also is a great location for some of these tourism-related things, well, which will, um, the applicant will address in their presentation. So go ahead. So again, the proximity that I described, um, the proposed use supports the business seats of local residents and surrounding areas. The Broadway corridor near the property already includes tourism-focused, community-oriented businesses. Um, and the site's proximity to key regional attractions enhances its potential as a visitor, as a, um, destination. So Tuzigoot, Verde Canyon Railroad, Tawaki Inn, um, and like I said, is located, um, point one, uh, eleven miles from the Verde River. So I can address questions now, if you have any initial thoughts. But I think having the applicant, um, propose their own, um, their own presentation to you, that way you can get an idea of why, why we have to do a change in zoning for this proposed use.
I have a question.
Does anyone have anything for staff right now?
There was a neighborhood meeting?
There was.
And can you tell us how many people attended and what was their position?
Sure, so initially, there was about maybe four or five folks who attended, and they were a little bit confused at the beginning as to why it was necessary. So why does a commercial need like an arts and wellness retreat center need to be, um, be changed over to a commercial purpose? Um, the applicant went through their presentation and, and demonstrated that because of the nature of this business, and it's not a, an intended residential use, that they would need to transition over to that. And I felt like folks in the, the general public understood why that was and really realized that it's much lower impact to their, to their homes, um, than the potential build out that is allowed currently, which, as I said, is a twelve four, um, fourplexes.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. So the, the application has been made with an idea already in mind of what is intended to be there, which requires this change.
Right.
So just in a what-if kind of a situation, if the change is made, what are, what's the extreme of what could happen there that isn't what the applicant is intending?
Um, well, I have the permitted uses, principal uses for commercial in that area, and I can, um, kind of run through the list. Um, that way you get an idea. Um, commercial trader vocational schools, um, community-supported agriculture, farmers' markets, um, hotels and motels, um, museums, medical facilities, artist studios, bed and breakfast. Um, there is kind of a plethora of uses that it could be potentially built out to. Um, professional office buildings, um, parks, religious institutions, restaurants. Um, those kinds of things that already align with the, like I said, the neighborhood commercial, um, land use designation that already exists there. Um, ADU, um, sorry, not ADUs, storage facilities. And again, all of these things have to abide by setbacks, um, allowances for the coverage of the lot as well. And any and all residential uses are permitted in commercial as well.
All right, I'm probably as confused as the people that attended the neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, it, it's just the commercial nature of the, of this business and the intended use, because they, an artist studio isn't allowed in a residential setting. This is why we're needing to make the, the transition to, or why they're applying for the, um, rezone to commercial.
But you're saying it could be a restaurant?
It could be, yes.
Could it be a restaurant with a bar?
Um, restaurant or tavern, yes. In order for those things to happen, though, you know, we do have to still follow a procedure that it wouldn't just be like, everyone can just.
I understand, it's just, oh.
Yes, it does open the possibility to other commercial uses.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Do you guys want to come up now? Do you, do you have any other questions for me right now?
Questions for anyone?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for hearing our presentation tonight. My name is Novi Trump. Um, this is.
I'm Eric Flippo.
Yeah, and we own Two Moons LLC, which owns the, um, parcel that we're talking about tonight. So, um, uh, if you want to start the slideshow, Gus. So currently, um, the property is called Penumbra. And if you go to the next slide. So, um, we bought it in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, it had kind of been semi-abandoned at that point by the second owner. We're the third owners. So we ended up gutting the entire building, um, had to. We're not planning on it, but had to. So we gutted the entire building and redid the whole property. So one of the things that is really important to us is, um, having a light, uh, presence on the land. So everything we did, we put in, um, watering systems that are low water usage. We put in everything in the, in the suites as low water as well. Um, we try to use environmentally friendly products, um, whenever possible. Um, we didn't pave anything but the, um, uh, handicap parking space that we put in, as well as a handicap accessible space. So, um, that was one of the most important things to us. Um, so since many of you haven't seen it, we thought we would include some slides. If you go to the next one, Gus, of what it looks like on the inside. So here is suite, um, one of the suites, living rooms with the view overlooking the valley and the river. Um, next one. And those are all Eric's photographs as well. So we did use all local artists' work, um, in the suites as well. So, um, and we did a lot of the work ourselves, so this was really a labor of love for us. Um, so this is the handicap accessible bedroom suite. Um, you can go on to the next one. Um, we also put, um, kitchenettes in each one so that people could stay for longer stays. And really get that, um, you know, home away from home experience. Next one. So we added some outdoor, um, things as well. So we have a bocce court and two fire pits, and you can go to the next one. And so in an effort to, our dream had always been to have more art and wellness offerings for it. So one of the things we did last year is we built a yoga deck. So we were fortunate enough to hire an excavator who came in and did everything to the inch, because we didn't want to disturb the desert. I even took a, a tupperware of the dirt to Home Depot to match the boards, because I didn't want it to be obvious to the neighbors or anybody. Like, you can't see this from the road, and it's big. It can hold, uh, twenty students. Um, and then we have a little lookout point there for stargazing over the river. And you can go to the next one. And then we also added a stone labyrinth. Um, I don't know if anybody's ever used one before? Yes? Anybody else? Yes? Um, for anyone who hasn't, they're really wonderful meditation and prayer tools. Um, they're found, um, all over the world from ancient times to now. Um, medieval churches use them quite a bit in Europe, and they're not a maze. You don't hit a blockage. So when you walk the entire thing, believe it or not, this thirty-foot circle takes about ten minutes to walk. So you walk around in loops until you get to the center, and you hold your prayer meditation in your mind, um, until you get to the center, and then you walk back out. So you can go to the next one. So one of the things our guests say to us over and over again is they thank us. We get probably at this point hundreds of messages, right, from people saying, "Thank you so much." We experience so much peace and rest, but the world is a really loud place right now. And what we wanted to gift people was what you guys, why you probably live here and why I live here. By the way, I live right next door. My parcel is adjoining the line, so I have a vested interest as well, right, in all of this. And so one of the things we wanted to do was expand our offerings for wellness retreats and art retreats. I'm an artist, I'm a sculptor and, um, jewelry designer, and also I have taught all over the world. And, um, uh, for the Smithsonian, I was the Chair of the Distinguished Artist Series. So we brought in artists from all over, and I've done that for art centers and everything. So I would like to have guest artists come in and do these really meaningful workshops with people that, and I will tell you, those workshops can really change people's lives, and adding in a wellness component too. So if you go to the next slide. So one of the things we would love to add are these four components, which is movement classes, um, using the yoga deck, um, and a future classroom, um, with Tai Chi, uh, yoga, um, mindfulness instructions such as meditation, um, different bodywork therapies for people, because I think that makes a really big difference, and, um, creativity workshops such as writing and, um, painting and, uh, collage, all sorts of things. I want things to be accessible for people, not just for professional artists to come. Um, sorry, that's one of my passions. I feel like everybody has an artist in them that's just waiting to be, um, encouraged. Um, so if you go to the next slide. So this is what is currently there. So this is an aerial view here. Um, so you can see the yoga deck, the labyrinth, the building, and, um, the parking lot there. So if you go to the next one. So this is what we would like to propose. Um, a meeting room slash classroom space with all glass looking out at the mountains, and then small guest casitas. And we have been doing research and been talking with Ruth a, a tiny bit about it, um, about what would be compatible with town regulations. But our ideal is to have them pre-built off-site and then lowered in with a crane. So there's minimal impact on the desert and on, um, uh, the neighborhood. Um, so it could all be done in, in two days max, and just lower them in place. Um, I can't tell you how often, when we were renovating, I would hear a chainsaw rev up. And I'd be like, "Oh, no, somebody has a chainsaw." And I'd run out, and like, one of the, like, electricians or whatever would be about to take down a, a beautiful tree. Like, we have a big, huge, um, specimen, uh, uh, mesquite tree that is the most spectacular, beautiful. I mean, it is, it is a thing of beauty, and I think I saved it, what, three times from getting, uh, because it was, quote, "in the way." Um, so that is important to us. I want to emphasize that to you, that we, it is important to us to be good stewards of the land and, um, the community. So if you want to go to the next slide. So this just gives you kind of a visual of what we could do with the property as it currently is, if we wanted to build multiplexes. Which we do not. Um, but that's what could be done. I mean, this doesn't reflect what is buildable at this point without a lot of excavation work, but that is how dense it could be. If you want to go to the next one, Gus. So the community benefits we feel, um, we could offer, um, we think it would enhance the local economy, attracting visitors who will support local businesses, restaurants, and shops, especially with all the exciting stuff going on in, in Cl- in Clarkdale. Um, we've been watching, um, for what, there are those people who walk by like every day with the dogs and go, "Ooh, what are they doing now?" Um, uh, we think it could create jobs for local artists, wellness practitioners, and service providers. And it would preserve open space and native plants and local wildlife, um, which is one of our main goals. Uh, Gus, if you go to the next one. So for quality of life improvements, we feel like retreat guests come for relaxation, art, and wellness, um, and they would stay for longer stays. Um, uh, it would support mental and physical well-being by bringing, um, stress relief activities like yoga, meditation, nature-based experiences to the community, because we would really like to open up those offerings to the community. And, um, again, preserving natural beauty, focusing on sustainability. Next slide. So, um, as far as community engagement, we feel that it would offer, um, opportunities for locals to, um, facilitate workshops and wellness programs. Um, potential for community use, again, of the labyrinth, yoga deck, and other amenities. And then, um, I'm a big believer in collaboration and cross-pollination. Um, so we would love to collaborate with local artists and practitioners and members of the community, um, to bring this to life. Next slide. So our long-term vision is to create a sustainable, respectful, and community-oriented retreat space. So, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do. Um, so it would be open to the public too, to take some of these classes?
Yes, that has been my hope. I, I was the director of two art centers, one that I founded in DC. And we had a lot of community program and I, programming and I really miss doing that and facilitating that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
So on a full busy day, how many people would be there?
Well, probably 10 to 15. If you have double occupancy. If it's single occupancy, eight. Or yeah, eight. No, nine. Nine, yeah.
So nine people staying there?
Yes, but there might be more people if they double up, like if they don't mind sharing.
Okay, staying. And then how about just people showing up for the day to do different things?
I'm not sure um, how many that would be. It would probably be a limited number. I like to keep classes really small. Like my workshops are typically eight people. Um, because any more than that and it gets, you know, no one gets the attention they need. So.
And the yoga deck accommodates 20?
Yes.
But theoretically.
Yeah, you could have a yoga class of like, that would be a little tight. You'd probably want like a yoga class of like 12.
12.
12 to 14.
And there's sufficient parking?
Yes.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the commission members? Uh, no?
I have a question, but it, it may do with uh, our internal versus what you guys.
Okay. Do you want to ask her instead then?
Yeah, I can address your question.
So the uh, the reason for going from the residential, the R2, into commercial is based on the motel rooms or what portion of it?
It's based off of the community space and, and the business nature of, of the, the, of the use. So it, it changes from residential use into a um, a kind of a business and also has a, you know, um, kind of like a hotel or, you know, the casitas thing. So that, that transitions it from the residential to commercial.
So, let me just wade in here first.
Basically an event venue.
An event venue.
Yeah, a retreat.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Yeah.
So with respect to the zone change, um, in Arizona, the zone changes are need to conform with the general plan designation. And in this neighborhood, it is neighborhood commercial. Um, which this business would be is a neighborhood commercial use rather than residential. So the proposed, the proposed zoning district is more in conformance with the general plan than the current use. If that makes sense.
All right, now. So where we are is, are there any other questions for the applicant from anyone on the commission?
When do you plan to open?
You're.
It's dependent on, on um, the, uh, approval of the zoning change.
Yes.
So.
We do have practitioners and artists and everybody who are interested in doing it. I've, I've talked to all different practitioners and they're all on board very enthusiastically that live in the area. So.
And obviously, in order to do any of this, we would need a, a approval for the project itself. I mean, this is just the zoning change.
Yeah.
There would be more.
Like architectural drawings and.
Yeah, there would be.
Yeah, all of that.
Um, involvement by the town and approvals and what have.
Right. Now, I think it's a wonderful project.
Oh, thank you.
And yeah, I'm just trying to get uh, my understanding of the zoning and what's happening with it.
Okay, thank you.
Are you looking to call on Ruth? Ruth, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Well, here's where we are. That we're at, does the commission, anyone on the commission, have any other questions? We're going to open public comment and I don't see anyone. To. Oh, he's watching me. I think. That's like, yeah, that's a Victor Kraus painting called Black Owls.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Nice, huh?
Yes. Whose painting is that?
Pardon me?
Who did that painting?
Victor Kraus.
Wow. Okay, sorry. Distracted.
Public domain.
Wow, it's really beautiful.
But screensavers are in the public domain. All right, um, so uh, we have no one here from the public. And uh, so we're not even going to open public comment.
We have to open public comment, right?
Yes.
All right, public comment is open. Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment? Thank you. No one's here. Public comment is closed. And uh, so I just want to say that I, it, it looks lovely and um, thank you. Zone change, so next is the zone change request from single family and limited multiple family residential R2 to commercial C2. Discuss, consider and act upon a zone change request for application number PC250024, APN 407026F, 414 Peace Garden Path, Clarkdale, Arizona, a 5.37 acre lot. A request to change the zoning designation from single family and limited multifamily residential R2 to commercial C to accommodate the establishment of an arts and wellness center. So um, with no further comment, I'm asking, do I hear a motion to approve or deny and forward to town council for their intelligence for the same? Do we have a motion?
Okay.
It's a long thing to say here, but I'll make a motion to approve the, do I have to say it all out? Um, application number PC 407026F, Peace Garden Path, Clarkdale, Arizona, a 5.3 acre lot. Um, I make a motion to approve it. I think it's a lovely project too. Thank you. And you, you mo, or you're motioning to approve and send to the council?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Do a second.
And we, alright, so we have a motion and a second. And so uh, this is a typo in my script here, I think. So uh, all those in favor of moving this forward to council, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
Thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
It looks great. Can't wait to visit.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Um, all right, so that particular item is the motion carries unanimously. And item eight for future agenda items. Do we have anything, Brittany, Britannia, Ruth, anybody?
I think we just discussed the selection of the chair and the vice chair for future agendas.
It's moving to the next in-person meeting with the caveat that if there's four members of the commission present, we'll proceed.
Yes, it will be included in the next agenda.
There won't be another postponement. And all right, so if there's nothing else, adjournment is next. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, do we have a second?
I second.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment at this time, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Ruth, for being here with us.
Thank you.
Meeting's complete.